To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So long since we've been together. Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No additions or deletions.
Very good, and no public comments. Miss Andy, very good. All right, before we go into discussion item one, I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to Superintendent Ansem.
President Canuti, the reason why we're here talking about the capital improvement project is because if you recall, as a board on December 9th, we gave us some overview in terms of things to think about and also certain options. We had a total of five options and you took some off the table. But in addition, you asked us to come back and to consider the following as well. You said you wanted to hear more in terms of the reconfiguration proposals and the rationale, specifically focusing on the instructional pieces of that. You also asked us to look at transportation impact, and so we did that. Our Director of Business and Finance spoke with the Transportation Department and also have some of that information added to the December 9th for you. And in addition, you also asked us to really talk a little bit about what are our thoughts regarding a district administration building? Because as we know, we are renting space, we are leasing space, and our contract will expire within five years, and we wanted to give you some ideas of what we were thinking about, depending on the decision that you would be making. And I like the fact that you asked us to come back and give you another overview with those additions, because what we found out after that conversation is that there was an additional 2022 study that was already done, that the board also looked at. So it gave myself and our Director of Business and Finance an opportunity to look and review some of the conversation that took place at this table already back in 2022, and to take a look at the original proposals that were done. So we want to let you know that we took all of that into consideration, and so she will do some recap of that 2022, because some members of this board was not at the table in 2022. That way, they can have a holistic picture. But also throughout the presentation, we are recapping some of the December 9th for those who are watching and probably didn't see the previous, but also making sure that we answer some of those questions and those three prongs that you wanted us to address. So with that being said, that's a general recap of the December 9th. I will pass the baton on to my wonderful cabinet member, Dr. Georgia Gonzalez.
Evening, everyone. So as Superintendent Ansem had mentioned, we did take a look at the redistricting study that was done from 2022. Some of the main pieces that I pulled out of that report included that the target class sizes were going to be between 21 and 24 students. The educational delivery was going to be more along the lines of what the state is now requiring, which is play-based learning for pre-K through third. Project-based learning for fourth through 12th would include our connected community schools, would have health and wellness, supportive learning programs, and enhanced specials within the building. Additionally, we would have program spaces that would include grade-level classrooms, our specials, which include art, music, a library media center, and phys ed, would include supported learning in our self-contained classrooms, health and wellness, administrative and operations spaces, Makerspace and STEAM learning labs, as well as commons and multipurpose rooms, outdoor learning spaces such as potential gardens, literacy and bookrooms, school-based clinics, and additional storage. From there, we looked at what the actual configuration at that time looked like. They were looking at having five K through 4th grade elementary spaces. That would include what we currently have is Stokes, Gansvort, Joy, and Clough, and stadium support would be added as an additional K4 building. In addition to that, they were looking at two 5th through 6th grade intermediate schools, which would be at the current buildings of Denty and Bellamy, and we would have one PK elementary, which would be what is currently Ridge Mills. After looking further at our minutes and so forth for the Board of Education, we determined that on August 8th of 2022, the board did implement and approve a K4, 5, 6, 7, 8 school configuration. That's what they wanted, yep, that's what they voted on and approved. So I just took a couple pages out of that report. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on these, but I wanted to make sure that we had it in our documentation, so that as we continue to move forward, we can always look back and see what we've had in play in the past. So this just shows the square footage comparison chart of each of the buildings. This was the comparison by schools for the deficiencies within those buildings currently and what we would need to add in order to have the spaces that we were looking at in that prior summary. And these are the spaces for each of those buildings and what they would be looked like. At this time, we're going to use these potentially as designs for future implementation, depending on which direction the Board of Education decides to go in. This building is for the pre-K, which is at Ridge Mills. This was for the Clough building, which we were looking at as a grade K through 4th. This is Gansvort grades K through 4. This was Stokes grades K through 4. This was Joy. This was going to be Denty grades 5 and 6. And this would be Bellamy, this is two spaces. The one to the left is where the gymnasium is, and the one to the right would be the two ends, if you were looking at the building as a T. And that would be Bellamy for grades 5 and 6. From there, I wanted to recap briefly what we went over on December 9th, just so that we could refresh that in our memory. We did discuss that we had a flood at Staley, which displaced roughly 800 students. The voters did approve a $34 million project back in May of 2024. Out of that 34 million, we also have 14 million currently that's going to be allocated to Clough. We are looking to complete a five-year capital project that will be rolling, so we're looking at not only what this project will look like, but what future projects in the future, such as the district administrative building. We also know that currently we have FEMA who would potentially provide us with up to 21 million. After speaking with fiscal advisors, they asked us to be conservative in that number for various reasons, and asked us to use 15 million in case we have to demolish Staley and for other possible contingencies that go into that. So we narrowed it down to about 15 million that they used as we move forward for our capital funding source. And as we mentioned, we did offer five options, which we narrowed down to three for tonight's discussion, and... Sorry. We wanted to look at these basic things as we move forward with tonight's presentation. So we have the elementary spaces that we want to look at the reconfiguration. Ultimately, we're going to make a decision about whether we want it to be K through 6th grade, or whether we're looking at a PK 3 option. We also know that we're going to renovate and add facilities to one of the locations that we've typically currently talked about for tonight. We're looking at adding an additional 40 or 50 classrooms, which would give us space of over 1,200 students within that location. And ultimately, one of the decisions that have to be decided is whether it's going to be an intermediate school or an elementary building.
Just real quick on the... So the design that the consultants did, which I cannot remember their name right now, John. The prior consultant. Just to make sure everyone knows, those were all designs based on their recommendation of what a K4, 5, 6 could look like. The board approved the actual configuration of K4, 5, 6, 2, 5, 6. We never approved anything from a layout perspective.
Absolutely.
Just because it was hinging on FEMA, and then that would lead us to building a new building or renovation. So I just want to make sure it's clear that the only thing we approved when we approved that was the actual
Configuration.
K4, 2, 5, 6 configuration.
Yep, absolutely. And I only have them in there so that as we continue through the process, if it's something that we want to look at without having to redesign everything, we have that option. If not, we can start over.
Perfect.
So one of the things that we wanted to consider tonight, after speaking to fiscal advisors, as you're looking through this presentation, they provided me with a lot of numbers. They wanted to make sure that the Board of Education knew that these are very rough numbers. We base these on a zero tax impact to all of our taxpayers, so when you look at the numbers, this is going to be a worst-case scenario. I don't want you to think, because they're kind of staggering when you look at the numbers, but they are representative of a zero tax base. With that, they did not include 1,100 of the BAUs that would be coming from Staley, because we're not sure at this point if we'll be able to use those. Throughout this process, over the last several weeks, we've actually found that the state still had Staley represented as a 7, 9 building, and therefore, if we're going to build a new building, that is for elementary, whether it's K6 or whether it's PK to 3, we're not sure that they will allow us to move those BAUs to that location. So we wanted to, again, go worst-case scenario without these BAUs included. They also wanted us to know that based on this information, the earliest that we'd be able to do anything with SED based on our current maximum cost allowances would be January of 2027, where then we could begin on the summer work and have fall completion of 2028. So that would be the earliest that we'd be looking at either of these buildings being completed. So the first building that we're going to look at is the Clough intermediate school. Again, we discussed the cost last time at approximately 73 million, and we still approximate that it would be 42 months in order to complete. Once we looked at this with fiscal advisors, we determined that we would need roughly a $53 million capital reserve in order to do this with zero tax impact. There's several pros to this, which would include that we would be able to move forward with the current state standards, which is the PK to 3 and the 4, 6 curriculum, and we would have potential cost savings of consolidating staffing. There are several cons at this point. After discussing with transportation, we would have to add six buses, because we would be transporting from the entire district, not just a regional location, of approximately 300,000, and we would also have approximately 450,000 in maintenance and operational costs of a new building.
Question on that. The 324,000, is that before we get aid?
That's before aid, yep. Yeah, because that changes from year to year, and since this would not be completed for a couple more years, again, we wanted to give worst-case scenarios.
I have a question on that slide as well.
Yes.
So why does the building... Well, it says follow state standards of PK 3 to 4, 6 curriculum. Why does the curriculum matter, what building, what the building looks like? I mean, isn't the curriculum... I would think that's separate than what a building looks like.
Sure. I can defer that a little bit to our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, John.
So in answering your question, for the PK 3 and the 4 through 6 curriculum, you are correct. The way that the curriculum is as it is with the state, the building right now, currently what we're doing is the K through 6. Those curriculums are being taught in the schools. When you actually have it into these configurations, it also takes into play, when you're doing professional development, and that vertical and horizontal alignment, it allows you to be able to be very building-specific when they are in these arrangements. When you go K6, it's a little bit different when you're doing the planning and trying to get that common planning across the curriculums of a large building. So one of those things that's a pro for that would be that vertical and that horizontal alignment would allow us to be able to address those specific needs per building when you're having specific primary buildings and intermediate buildings. So the state standards are the standards, you are correct. Okay?
The maintenance operation costs are 450. There must be some maintenance operational costs today, I'm assuming, for Clough, so those costs would be in addition because of the additional space here.
Correct, because currently, we only have two custodial staff that are in here. When you start talking 800 students instead of the 150 to 200 pre-K students that we have in here, plus we're looking at including another almost 20,000 square foot. So square footage and the heating costs obviously will increase, and so after speaking to our facilities and maintenance directors and staff, that's what we've come up with for a number. Intermediate schools cost a little bit more in general, because there's a lot more movement of students from classroom to classroom versus those classrooms where a student would stay in a typical classroom except for specials. So intermediate schools, you'll notice that trend through this, they're going to be more expensive.
Okay, thanks.
Later on, that question that you posed in terms of curriculum and instruction, we have a piece that outlines that, because some of the proposals I had at the table was if we're looking to build an elementary school building, we need to reconfigure and make sure we put PK in an elementary building, where the PK 3 will focus on the foundational literacy, like to begin to develop those foundational and mathematical skills. And plus, when an administrator is in a building that is focusing on PK 3, it's much more intentional, and we can make sure that once they leave to go then to the 4, 6, then you build upon and strengthen those foundational skills that started early on. But you will see that in a slide where we specifically talk about even all the way to 912, how we got to make sure that we are building that pathway for every student, and that pathway will start even at 4, 6, where students will begin to explore their interests and so on and so forth. So again, making sure we're following state standards, but it's also good to have like a focus, so that you can make sure that the foundational literacy skills are set in point, because I've said this at the table before, if kids are not reading by 3rd grade, they're going to struggle throughout the rest of their PK 12 career.
So this is just a slide representing what our reconstruction or additions cost would be. As you can see, by looking both at the left-hand and the right-hand side, we would be looking at approximately a $13 million versus a $36 million reconstruction versus addition cost, which is what comes up to 53 million in total. This is more just FYI, but if you want more information on it, please let me know, and I can get that for you as well. So then we also looked at Clough as a K6 building, and again, we know that the price is going to be, or the cost will be approximately 63 million, with again, roughly a 42-month timeline. But in this case, when we worked this out with fiscal advisors, we would see roughly a 29 or almost $30 million capital reserve versus the 53 million that we saw with the intermediate building. This has to do with how many classrooms we would be adding and the types of classrooms that would be going into that space. Again, one of the pros for this, because it would be regionalized, would be that we would have cost savings in transportation. We would have a reduction of approximately three buses, which annually would be approximately 162,000. We would also be able to get all of our bus times for all buses, not just in the Clough region, but in all of the elementary regions, down to less than one hour. Again, we would have operation costs of approximately 250 for maintenance and operations, because we would have more students in the building and so forth.
Sorry.
No, you're okay.
It just dawned on me. So both of these costs are renovating to either house intermediate or K through 6. Neither of those would be the cost of moving the district office? Or would that keep the district office in Clough?
District office would not be in Clough in either of those situations.
Okay, okay.
And we'll have a little more discussion on that a little later in the presentation. And again, these are just the costs, it'd be approximately 10 million in reconstruction and approximately 18 million in additions, which is the difference in the cost when we're looking at the capital reserve requirement. Because K6 would require a little bit different with transportation, whereas a PK 3 building would have all of our students... I'm sorry. An intermediate building would require us to redistrict with the entire district for transportation. K6 would allow us to regionalize. So this would be similar to what the transportation piece would look like, and we could see that the bus riders on the left-hand side would be a lot less, it's reduced from what the current rates are currently. We also had a discussion briefly with the Assistant Superintendent of Instruction to determine what would be the maximum number of students for each of those buildings, and that's how we were able to build that regionalization. Again, we don't know, depending on how the district decides they want to move, this is just an estimate, it's not set in stone.
Question on this, though. So like you have Gansvort there with 380 as bus riders? I thought the majority of Gansvort students were walkers anyway.
This is with the anticipation that Superintendent Ansem had asked that potentially we have more of our students that are walkers be able to ride the bus because of the winter months. So if we were to reduce that space in order to accommodate during the winter months.
Okay, so that is in bus riders as of... I see what you're saying, okay, all right.
So in these options, again, it would be dependent upon the Board of Education, but PK could be in these buildings, which is part of what we've discussed, or PK could end up being a separate building, which was part of that original discussion in 2022.
PK in these elementary schools, and we don't get funding for busing for them, right? So does that mean they would all, if you're in pre-K, you have to walk, or the cost of picking them up wouldn't be there, because is that true?
So there's two ways to look at it. So typically, most schools that have PK that do have riders, they just include them with the ridership, which is what I would recommend to Superintendent Ansem, and then she can make that recommendation to you, especially if we're trying to get more students to come in. We get funding for PK by how many students we actually have in here. So if we have students that are not coming because of transportation, obviously, we want to increase that participation. In addition to that, when you include those numbers on your transportation piece, they're not necessarily looking at how many of them are PK versus what are K through 12th grade. They're looking at just how many riders you had on those specific days. So we would be able to disparage that, but at the same point, we'd be able to include how many. It's not going to require more bus numbers per se, it depends on how we split that up, but it would definitely allow us to get more students in here, which ultimately would be better funding through the PK programs.
An average, like, route per zone? So like, for example, like the average route for all of our catchments are six routes for each elementary school. So like, if a kinder or a pre-K class is 20-ish people, like, really, we're adding less than five potentially per route. Obviously, you could have some kind of in the same routes. Do we know that at all?
So if I understand your question, we would have somewhere between five and nine buses for each of those catchment areas. Because of the number of students that are able to fit into each of those buildings, we would be reducing, you'd increase the number of buses in those catchment areas, but you'd reduce the number of students that are on each of those buses, so that way we would have ridership of less than an hour.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Any other questions?
That's not the recommendation, it's just we want to give you the whole kit and caboodle. You know where my recommendation stands, PK 3s and 1, 4, 6 building, but we want to give you all of the information in case.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that 1, 4, 6 building is your recommendation?
Yes. And that is why we're saying, if whatever we do, whether it's RCS or refurbishing, CLEF, we want to make sure we have enough space to accommodate the current 800, but also build enough to accommodate about 1,200, because our district will continue, in my estimation, continue to increase and not decrease.
So in any of these options that we choose, if it were to be Clough, we would build this building out to house all grades 4 through 4, 5, and 6?
Correct. So that at 4th grade, that's where all of our students, no matter what building they're coming from, Ridge Mill, Gansvort, they become Rome City School District students, rather than being attached to a specific elementary school, where sometimes they don't see themselves as Rome City Schools. So the earlier that they can converge under one building, the better. We are black knights.
Yeah, yeah, I think that makes sense. That was one of my questions I was going to have in any of these options, is okay, well, if you're deciding between pre-K, 3, 4, 6, which schools are pre-K through 3 and which ones are 4 through 6? So that helps clarify and hopefully help everybody make a decision tonight or as soon as possible on this, thanks.
So you're just trying to give the information more as a whole than from what we just spoke about, because last time we did speak
Yes.
We talked about a few options.
Correct.
And is where we were at.
Yep.
Which I'm glad to hear all the information, but I think, you know, we've gone through it so much.
Yes.
You know, I'm just between a couple of options to hear more. I don't know where everybody else is. When I hear this, I'm like, wait, what is that? And what... So I know where we're moving forward. Not that I don't want to provide all the info, but I feel like I have that as we...
And also understand that this is also for the community, because we're trying to do a recap of everything that we talked about on December 9th, and to incorporate some of the fiscal advisors piece to it, and in addition, all of those other pieces that you had asked us about from transportation and so on and so forth. So it feels like a recap for you, but I think it was important that we do it again as a recap, but also taking into consideration everything that you asked us to do, including talking to the fiscal advisors.
So another option was the location of stadium support. With that location, we approximated 74 million for the build-out, which would take approximately 42 months. In that, we expect that it would be 68 million for a capital reserve. From there, we have some of the similar pros that we had with an intermediate school at Clough. We would have the addition of six buses of 324,000, and again, 450,000 for maintenance and operation costs. And this is the breakdown between reconstruction versus additions. In this scenario, the reconstruction would only be approximately 3.5 million, where we would be building additions to house those additional students of approximately 48 million.
With stadium support, the operational cost, does that include the stadium costs, or we separated those out?
That would be separate.
Okay.
And then stadium support as a K6 building, again, approximately 74 million with 42 months, and approximately 56 million as a capital reserve. We would have a reduction of 10 buses, because there are a lot more walkers in that regional area, and we would still have bus ride times under one hour. Maintenance costs would be approximately 250,000 per year. And the breakout between reconstruction and additions would be 3.5 versus 36 million to get to the 56. This is what the ridership would look like in that area, and again, you can see the bus rider numbers on the left-hand side and compare that to what we have for Clough for the K6 building. Again, we're not necessarily recommending this, but we wanted to be able to provide that information to you. Then we also had the possibility of RCS, in that we had approximately 59 million in costs with approximately 48 months to be able to build out. In this scenario, because of the additions of the ADA accessibility, we are figuring roughly 64 million for capital reserves that would be required. Again, the same pros of state standards between a PK 3 and a 4, 6 curriculum, and the savings by consolidating staff. We would have to add seven buses in this scenario, because again, it's an intermediate school, so we'd be looking to transport from the entire district and approximately 450,000 in maintenance and operation costs.
Question on the last slide, and maybe this, Kelly, is where you were headed, one more back? So like in this, we have Bellamy, Denty, Gansvort, John Joy, Ridge Mills, stadium support, Stokes. What happens to Clough in a stadium support K6?
Sure. So again, it depends on what the Board of Education decides to do. They can... Part of our conversations in the past have been that PK will actually go back into the K6 buildings and be absorbed into those spaces where there's inclusivity. If we decide not to do that, and we decide to go back to the 2022 studies where we would have a space specifically for them, then we would be looking at that as another program. But we were really looking at having them included back into the other elementary buildings.
Okay.
And that, depending on the regionalization of that, you may have one PK in one building, you may have two in another building, and so forth and so on.
Okay.
PK, and now we had CLEF, CLEF could become the district administration building. So all of those pieces. So if we decided that stadium support was going to be in play, and CLEF is no longer, that could be the spot where we reconfigure to do the district administration building totally, slash operation center, because we need an operation center.
And again, this is what the breakout would look like with approximately 30 million in reconstruction, and approximately 31, almost 32 million in additions. Then if we had Rome Catholic as a K6 building, again, we'd have the 59 million for the costs, 48 months in order to be complete, and roughly 30 million for the capital reserve, with a reduction of seven buses, with almost 378,000 in savings, and bus ridership would be under one hour, with 250,000 in maintenance operation cost. This would break down between reconstruction and additions of 26 million to that of a little over 2 million. Again, we would have the additional cost of purchasing that space as well. And this is what that ridership would look like for a K6, with the regionalization that they had set up. Again, depending on what we decide in terms of catchment areas, this So we wanted to show you briefly what we currently have in place, which is the K6 configuration. By moving into a K6 configuration in any of those buildings, we would have a reduction in class size, which means that then we'd be able to add some of our art and music classrooms. For the PK3 versus the 46 intermediate configuration, which is what we're proposing, you would see not only a reduction in class size in addition to the art and music classrooms, but we'd also be able to see a 4th grade orchestral band operation, which currently we don't have, and we'd also be able to see the 46 departmentalization and content areas, which prepares them for the middle school. Then you would also see the PK, I'm sorry, P3 learning continuum in the literacy best practices. At this time, I'm going to pass the baton over to our Assistant Superintendent to be able to discuss more of the curriculum instruction pieces.
One question first. So with that first slide from that 2022 study, I think it said the goal was 21 to 24 students per class, I think. So is that, no matter which option we pick, is that the class size that is still the goal? Because I know that's been a hot topic, class size.
That's still our goal, yes.
Okay.
Yep. Okay.
So for curriculum and instruction, in the configurations that we have, the proposed primary and the intermediate, it's in alignment with our district's commitment to rigor and excellence. The proposed configurations will prioritize the following expectations. So we do the PK3 primary level. This curriculum is focusing at the level, at this level, to ensure that all students develop the strong foundational literacy and math skills within the child-centered supportive learning environments. Here, we're going to continue to actually focus on the big six literacy pillars. So we're going to continue to focus in on fluency, comprehension, oral language, phonemic awareness, phonics, and vocabulary. We do that as well now, but I just want to emphasize that we will continue to do that as well in the pre-K primary level. The 46 intermediate level, very similar to how Staley was set up, so that there was specific interdisciplinary with the four cores. We also had the departmentalization, so the teachers were able to really hone in on that math and the ELA and the science, as well as the social studies. So we'll continue to have a configuration that would look like that. So the students at this level will be strengthening and building upon their essential literacy and math skills through integrated and also interdisciplinary learning experiences. Additionally, students will begin exploring their interests and strengths to support their academic and personal growth. We're continuing to work with our partnerships with Poly-SUNY. We're also speaking with businesses on the base in Innovar, so that we can actually bring these things to our students and these opportunities sooner. With the New York State Regents deciding to go with these pathways, these pathways are starting sooner. So the sooner that we're able to gauge our students' interest and start letting them see these interdisciplinary learning experiences, the sooner, the better that we can do that, to be in alignment with the new portrait of a graduate. So that is the idea between those, as well as emphasizing what Superintendent Insom mentioned. When you have your school building leaders as well, right now, currently, our school building leaders, especially with some of our teachers, our support staff, E&amp;L teachers, all of them have to know that K6 spread of curriculum and that focus for them, especially when you're talking about E&amp;L, especially when you're talking about these support services, they have to be, their knowledge has to be stretched across those seven grade levels. This way, when you're actually in a PK3, 4, 6, it makes that very, very honed in on specifics for those grade levels. So E&amp;L now can look at K1, 2, 3, and they don't have to have that 4, 5, 6. So many of you, if you don't know, some of our E&amp;L teachers are one in a building of 600. It's only one teacher. So those are some of the things that we are definitely going to gain with that. Also, our principals, when you're looking at all of the changes that we're having in curriculum and instruction, and all the things that they need to know, especially with the addition of the computer science standards, especially with your SEL, and the new standards that we're having with the Next Gen for all of these cores that we have, they have to have this knowledge of all of those pieces. When you do this now, you are able to take those administrators and really let them hone in on primary. That focus is on primary. Your whole entire staff focus is on primary. All of your PD opportunities are on primary. The coaches that you have come in are all primary. And then as well as the intermediate, having all of those students in one location, to be able to have that horizontal and vertical alignment in one school building, this also allows them to have that foundation, so that when they're getting ready to go to Stroud, and that changing of the classes, and really starting to build up their confidence before they go into Stroud, and in 7th and 8th grade, we know, we have kids, they get nervous about that changing in the locker. So we're building those foundational skills and allowing them to be exposed to those pathways, and starting to form them from 4th grade, so that as we go into the next section that we have, when you're looking at 7, 8 in the middle school, right now, that needs to make sure that we are continuing to engage. This is what we actually do now, explore their interests and their strengths. Students will also have opportunities to begin exploring various pathways. We're starting to introduce a lot of those now, and starting to pair up with some of our outside partners to allow them to come in and really start looking at STEM, and bringing those programs in earlier, not just on vacations in summer, but starting to look at programs to start embedding them into their courses. And also to have access to the accelerated courses to start earning essential credits towards graduation. This is the same, we have algebra, we have living environment, we also have a business course, that they're able to get some credits right now. And then in the 9, 12, what we see with them is they now are really starting to push those pathways. So for college and career success, it's very important that our students are ready. Each student will complete a pathway aligned with their interests and strengths, reflecting the districts, as well as the state portrait of a graduate, and the vision that we have. So with the portrait of a graduate, it's very specific to demonstrate proficiency in each of the actual components, so they need to become innovative problem solvers. They also have to have, they have to be literate across the content areas. They need cultural competence, social, emotional competence, effective communicators, global citizens, and we also want to make sure that they're critically thinking. So this is the portrait of the graduate. If you are not aware, we actually were just approved by the state for our fine arts pathway, so that's going to be one of the graduation pathways in addition to the ones that we're adding to now. We also still have, we have, we still have PTAC, we have Propel. We were approved for the arts pathways. We have SEALs of Civic readiness, and also the SEAL of Bilinguacy, and also our CTE component. So we are well on our way of really making those pathways, but the point that I really want you to understand is that those pathways just don't start in the high school. That's why it's really important that we really start to get into the primary, intermediate, and then that middle school and high school mindset, because these things have to be able to start at an earlier age. And the 4, 5, 6 configuration will allow us to really diversify and start reaching our kids sooner, so that that relevance and that pathway that they can start seeing themselves is starting to be paved earlier, and not later. High school, it's too late. Okay? Any questions on curriculum or instruction? Okay. I'm going to turn it right back over to Dr. Gonzalez.
And the last task that you asked us to look at was actually what we would do with our district administrative space. So depending upon the decision that you make for our space considerations tonight, we would be looking at, if you chose CLEF as the building space, then we would look at stadium support and/or facilities, the facilities building, in order to convert that to a district administration and operations building. If you chose to use stadium support as that building space, then we would be looking to change CLEF into a district administrative space with transportation facilities here. So really, we have the spaces available, we just need to make a decision on what we want to do in this phase one, and then we can begin providing proposals on what that would look like for the district office and administration spaces as part of our next planning purpose.
One of the biggest things on my mind, and I don't think this is specific to curriculum instruction, it may be more geared for you, is, you know, we talked a lot about, when the three of us did this previously, about transitions and the impact on child experience. And I'm pinching in my head these little 4th graders going into this massively large school. How, maybe, can you give us a little picture of, like, what would a building layout look like, so that these, these little fish are not swallowed up in, you know, the big sea?
Absolutely. In a 4, 5, 6 building, you have to create, similar to how they do at the middle school right now, they have color lockers, and they have wings that specifically house certain grade levels. And I would see that in a 4, 5, 6. So you would probably put the 4th grader, graders up front with a different color locker. It could be purple, green, whatever the school community decides to do. And then 5, grade 5 will have their own wing, and grade 6 will also have their own wings. But then there's also the opportunity for 5th and 6th graders to be leaders, to welcome the 4th graders at the same time. So again, build in that leadership capacity, in addition to focusing on the academics as well. But I see that as wings.
And then, is there, like, is there a plan in that where, like, you know, I think it would be devastating for someone coming from one school to not have anyone that they know in these classes? Is there, like, in 4th grade, like, do you kind of cohort schools together to have familiar faces, or is it really just lottery in what those classrooms would look like?
I would say, once they leave the PK3 and come under the umbrella of a 4th grade, that's where the transition is super crucial. If you looked under our district priorities, one of the things that I've asked the team to work on is a transition process even now. When students are leaving this PK building and going into any elementary school, what I've asked the administrators and the district administrators to do is to create a space, or in a transition opportunity where even before school closed, to have them go into those buildings, to get to meet staff, to get to meet other students, to feel acclimated. And the same at each grade level. So when you have 6th grade move into 7th, I'm asking them to do activities where the 6th graders get to experience what middle school feel like and look like, so that they get that experience before the closure of school. So what we're talking about is a transition, and no matter what the configuration is, it makes sense that students, as they transition from one grade level to the next, that they have a transition plan, or when they transition from one building to another, that we give them that experience of spending a day, maybe half a day. And that's where you can build student leaders, to be able to welcome them and acclimate them into the building, teaching them how to open a locker, or do all of those things. And, and these are things that we should be doing right now. It is part of our district priorities this year, and I don't see that changing. Anything you'd like to add, Jen, or?
I just want to just echo on that. When we actually do do the plan, one of the things, too, is you often can see that even with the 4th grade, not to, you know, cause alarm, but they wouldn't be changing classes right away with those. They need to transition in, into the building and things like that. I, you know, foresee when we actually look at this, potentially, they would be having their single classrooms, and then starting to have some of those transitions, and potentially, some of those work-together collaborations with the classes later on in the spring. I don't want people to get the wrong impression that the 4th graders are going to be changing classes and getting lockers right away.
Yeah.
So hopefully, that helps a little bit, in addition to the comments that Superintendent Insom shared.
How many 4th grade classes do we have right now in our entire district?
So off the top of my head, just thinking about some of the buildings, I will say, in our district right now, 4th grade is one of our closed-out capped grades across the district. We don't have enough sections of them. So when we're looking at those, for the most part, there's anywhere from two in the smaller buildings. So up at Stokes, they have two. Johnny Joy has two. So the 4, Bellamy, I believe, has three, and there might be a special ed, or supportive learning classroom. So seven, at most, I think we're looking at, we have 12 across the district, and we're short right now.
Also, when kids at elementary school go up to Stroud, I mean, it looks like that there's something, a plan in place, because it looks like they're with their friends. So when they're on these teams, right, I mean, they, they don't go where there's nobody on their team from their school. However the teachers do it, or however it's done, it seems like it's intentional where buddies are together, and that you're integrated with others, at least.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of care taken when students come up and they take a look at that. Now granted, you know, the number of teams that they have, and we also made sure equity-wise, that we offer all of the high school, you know, three sections of living environment, and the three sections of algebra. Honestly, when I was here 10 years ago, we didn't have a section for every single team. So that, that was like a bias with the team. So that's been straightened out. So that's even across the board. So if you wanted to take those classes, and one team didn't have it, then that didn't exclude you from being on those teams with those other teachers. So they're doing a really nice job, but we want to enhance what we're doing and add to it, so the students will have an even more, their experience would be closer to what it's going to be like when they actually go into school, and talking about actually doing a day where they don't just visit, but they also go, and they buddy system with some of the students, so that they shadow them for the day. Those are some of the things that we are throwing around and looking for a transition plan in place for them to be able to do more than just go to the auditorium and hear about what's going to happen at Stroud. We do a really nice job, but we want them to have a day in the life of a 7th or an 8th grader.
I just wondered, so like, is a middle school traditionally now, throughout, like, if you're building a new school right now, would you make a middle school at, like, 4 to 6, or?
No.
I mean, what would be the configure? Is there, is there an accepted?
It depends on the district.
Everybody's different?
Mostly, a lot of middle schools are 6 to 8. Folks who have, like, a 7, 8 configuration would call that a junior high school. And so, because here, we just worked on Stroud not too long ago, we figured, do not touch Stroud, and do not touch RFA, let's really focus on the PK6 level. And so that's why, yeah. But...
Well, I don't know how much, I don't want to break up your presentation any further, but before we get into too many details about these options, I just wanted to see, if you're just looking at cost alone, there's quite a range here, going from 59 million to 73 million. How feasible is this? How, how do we come up with this funding? How much, I, I just want to, you know, from my, from my own knowledge, and also for the community that'll be listening in, where's this money coming from? How are we going to afford all this? You know, especially, it's very disappointing to hear, on a side note, that our 21 million from FEMA, which was already disappointing, is now down to 15, because we have to pay for potential demolition. And I wish there was more we could do on that front. But, but yeah, if you could just kind of give a general background on, you know, if, no matter what option we choose, how are we going to get to this large $73 million mark?
Sure. So ultimately, we'd be looking at what the capital reserve numbers are. So you'll see that those are a lot less than that capital project number, but they're still quite high. Again, those are used as worst-case scenarios. So what we would be looking at over the next couple of years is building our budget, our general fund budget, to have that extra funding built in there, so that we knew as a board that we were going to move a certain amount of that right into a capital reserve and have it planned that way. So in the one case where there's 29 million that we would need as reserve, we would start building that into the budget, that we would be moving, you know, 3 or 5 million dollars from general fund into that reserve each year for the next couple of years. The additional piece is that we know that this is to keep a zero tax base. So if we were okay with having the tax increase be 1, 2, 3%, whatever the number may be, that would reduce what we need to have in a capital reserve. So those are all things that we would have to make a decision about as a team, as part of the Board of Education, as we build the budgets over the next several years. But that's how we would go about, that's the process to do it. And how much we put into a reserve versus how much we put into a tax basis, that will be a consideration for part of the finance committee, that would be part of the considerations here at the Board of Education table.
Okay, so for, if I, if I wrote down correctly, for the CLEF intermediate, we had 53 million needed for capital reserve?
Correct. So we, again, would be starting to look at, how quickly do we want to do this? How much can we really pull from a general fund to put into a capital reserve, based on excess funds that we would have in our general fund? We could also start looking at options of grants and so forth. There are things out there that we could look at. This is not taking
This does not take into consideration the full amount of FEMA, as you mentioned. We might be able to get that a lot less for demolition and so forth, depending on where we go. Again, we're using those as cost based that, and what was given to us. But we may have a buyer for Staley, for instance. So that 3.5 would be money that we could use back from FEMA rather than demolition. And that 2.5 was, again, just a rough number in case there's other contingencies out there. But again, that might be money that we can use from FEMA. Basically, once we know what we want to do and what those numbers look like, then we can begin putting a funding plan together, because it doesn't matter which plan we go with. We're going to have to have reserves in place and we're going to have to put together a budget that we can stand by with the taxpayers, either as a 0% or as a increase for several years to come to be able to fund those sources.
And I can't remember what the percentage of an increase in tax is equated to in dollars. Can you remind me what, like a 1% increase?
Sure. So it really depends on what area you are, but without getting into too much of the nuts and bolts there, approximately 1% ends up being between 15 and 20 dollars in this district.
No, I'm sorry.
You need to cross.
As a total, how much would the district expect to see if we, if we did get a 1% tax increase?
Sure. So we have, I'm trying to do the math in my head real quick. We have $157 million budget with approximately 35 million of that being from taxpayers. So 1% is approximately 3.5 million.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
What was the stadium support number? Two again, I'm sorry. The stadium, so building and stadium support, the, was 74?
Yeah, and then I can't remember. I think it was 56 maybe for the capital reserve portion of that, depending on which option you chose.
I think the other question I have is obviously, the state is not as wealthy as we once used to, and we see a lot less state aid. And I think this district has seen enough times where we have done school closures. So looking at kind of what we know going on at the state level, like what is the level of risk in any of these options that require essentially a whole new building getting online?
Sure. So again, there's a couple of things going on there. The state, as long as we maintain our BAUs, will allow us to maintain the numbers that we have in terms of state aid. I can't speak for what the state's going to do in the near future, but based on conversations that I've been a part of over the last several years, and I believe Superintendent Ansem has as well, I don't want to say they're going to hold us harmless, but as long as our numbers do not continue to decrease, then we will not see a loss in state aid. Ultimately, we know that over the next several years, we're going to have to increase taxes, whether we do it because of capital projects or otherwise. And that would be part of the conversations that we start having in a finance committee and at the board. But right now, I think we have to recognize that we know we have a space issue. And in order to maintain those students in our district and not have them go elsewhere for various reasons, we're going to have to plan for that. Whether we have overcrowding in our classrooms, which we currently have, which from a state perspective is also not good, or whether we build a building and then receive the building aid on it, which is separate from that foundational aid that we get from the state, we know that we're going to receive part of that back. So even though we're going to have quite a bit that we put up front into our reserve, we will see that in the building aid, so there will not be that continuous increase in cost later on, again, based on the capital reserve piece that we're talking about. If we're going to have more of a tax basis that we pay on an annual basis, then that reserve amount will drastically decrease. And once we have an idea of which building we want to go with, then I can provide that to fiscal advisors and they can provide us with, okay, if you're going to have a 1% increase over the next 15 years, this is what that would look like and what you would need in a capital reserve. So then we can build our five-year plan for our budget for our general fund. Does that help? Okay. Were there any other questions?
Yeah, I had a question. So it sounds like there's a lot of different combinations here, like you have the three buildings, you have Rome Catholic, Stadium Support, and Clough. And then you got the pre-K 3, the different configurations. So you could, for example, have Rome Catholic be the one selected, and it could be a K 6, it could be a PK 3, it could be a 4 6, and the same thing with all those other three buildings. So it sounds like there's like a lot of different.
So there's really only six options. And the three options are the three buildings, which is RCS, Stadium Support, and Clough. And then either of those three options, it's either K 6 or it's a 4 6 building.
PK 6. I mean, PK 3.
PK 3, I'm sorry.
So like, once the board decides on which?
No, we were doing a 4 6 as an intermediate and a PK 6 option. So it's just an elementary school, which is similar to what you currently have in the district, or it would be an intermediate school with a 4 6 configuration. And that would be in any of those three options.
Right, okay.
Does that make, does that make sense? So it's really, you're looking at three options in each of those two locate, I'm sorry, two options in each of those three locations.
So that, and that was either K 6, or what was the second one? Or?
Or it's 4 6.
4 6. So one of the new buildings would be a 4 6 or?
Correct. And then the, so if we went with an intermediate school, 4 6 in the new location, then all of our elementary buildings would become PK 3.
PK 3, exactly.
Right. Okay. So whatever the new building is of the three, that building will be the one and only 4 6.
Correct.
If we go that world. Otherwise, it'll be a, okay, thanks.
And that would be, again, let's be clear, that's our proposal. Our proposal is to remove PK as a standalone, to move it into the, the current existing elementary buildings and turn those into grade level bands of PK 3. And then whatever building we build should become the intermediate building, where then the students are now transitioning together earlier at the 4th grade level, rather than at the 7th grade level.
It sounded like from your comment earlier, that, so that your recommendation is this new model, but your recommendation is also Clough as the 4 6 building? Was that what I heard earlier, or no?
That would be one of the ones that I would encourage you to do for several reasons, because we already have Clough as part of the 2024 project that was voted on by the voters. And as Georgia had stated before, the scope of that project was left open, so that if we wanted to do, go that route, we can add to it and make Clough become the intermediate schools. We, I know that you guys have a great interest in purchasing RCS, which also makes sense to us. However, we believed after looking at the entire district that we have enough buildings in this district where, if we were, we're trying to get rid of two buildings. So if we were to acquire another building, is it necessary? So those are the kind of things that we want you to think about.
Where would the district office go?
Well, we would, that's a good, good question. So let's say we use Clough. The district office could go to Stadium Support, or where currently around the area where the Facilities Department is, is that on Dart Circle?
Mm-hmm.
I keep, yeah. Where the, there's a, I don't know if you've ever seen that smaller brick building. Those are all land, right? We need to demolish that building and really use that space to build a district administration slash operation center, so we can get rid of the facilities currently.
But we don't get any aid on that because it's all non-instructional?
That's correct. That would be that way with any district administration building that you build?
Yeah, no matter where you, you have it.
So that is one benefit of if we went, and I'm neither here nor there, but if we went with RCS, we are going to get aid, instructional aid on that building, and Clough is already here. So we're not really incurring any additional renovation at the expense of taxpayers necessarily. I mean, obviously, like, the capital improvement project was already approved for this building.
With the?
There'd be some modifications to the aidable unit in that, but.
You would lose the aid on Clough.
Right, because it's a district administration building. No matter where you put the district administration building, you get no aid on it, because it's not a school building.
I'm just thinking from a community member, it would be a lot harder to pay for an administration building in my, that's my view.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
What other districts do for administration spaces tied to transportation?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
So part of our plan is that if we're going to make this the district building, but we're going to include operations, transportation would be part of that. So we would be able to receive transportation aid on it. So we'd be moving away from the building aid that you get on BAUs, and we'd be moving towards transportation aid that we'd receive.
Entirely different conversation.
Different day, yeah.
Do we own the Dart Circle property?
I would have to look into that. I do not know the answer for sure.
Okay.
I believe so. Assistant Superintendent, yeah.
I don't have a question per se, but, and I'm not sure if I'm ready to make a determination on the configurations yet, but just looking at location space and geographically, I think this location here, Clough, and Stadium Support are more centrally located, where RCS is a little bit further north. So I think there are some advantages in those two spots. Unfortunately, the cost is slightly higher, but I just wanted to share my thought on that.
And no action is being taken today. Next week, you will.
You know, I've thought a lot about this since the last time, plus Cassie, John and I have been through a lot, as far as, you know, a lot of plans, a lot of different things. The one thing that I'm sure about for myself is that, right now, I want everyone to think about, if your child, you want to put your child in pre-K, there's no busing. So if you don't have a car, or you can't walk here, your child does not get to go to pre-K unless you can pay for it or they go somewhere else. So it just seems like if we wanted to do anything spectacular, we would take pre-K in the neighborhood schools. And, and I'm not, I'm, I'm way far from all these years, a pre-K 3, 4, 6, but just knowing the last few years, it just seems like the right thing to do, that all kids in pre-K get the opportunity to go to school and be bused or walk in their neighborhood schools. That I, I can say confidently, I feel. Whether it's Stadium Support, I could take Rome Catholic off the table. I think Nerlan's right. I can't imagine us getting another building. We already own buildings and don't know if we own buildings, and we have to condense and be intentional about it. But the pre-K piece for me is, I think that it's very important.
Yeah, and I can speak to that point. Having a kid in pre-K in elementary now, I, I agree wholeheartedly that there would certainly be an advantage there for a parent's standpoint, I believe, to have pre-K along with the pre-K through 3 program. The busing aspect would be fabulous. And my daughter would absolutely love to be in the same school as her kid. So I guess that kind of takes away my one, that's a con to me, would be the transition. I think Cassie pointed on from 3 to 4, but I guess you're kind of removing one transition from pre-K to K. So it's kind of a trade-off in my mind. So that helps ease it from my perspective. But yeah, I love the idea of adding pre-K. And to all your points earlier about how it, how it would prepare the students even more so, and, and help, hopefully help the teachers, you know, from just keeping the kids progressing and keeping that communication line open.
And the data that we've seen and that was presented, a lot of times, you know, kindergarten teachers, I've heard them say, you don't know. I mean, there's brand new kids. This way, you understand the families earlier, and it's really a great way to just know our community.
I had not thought about what Cassie brought up, though, about making this our administration building, purchasing Rome Catholic and making this our administration building. I mean, to me, that just brings one cost that we don't have to think about then, which is the, where are we going to put the administration building five years from now? And centrally, this is a great spot for that. So I guess, now that that has been brought up, I certainly want to ponder that for a little bit, but I certainly like the idea of a pre-K to 3 and 4 to 6 makes, to me, makes all the sense, looking at what those changes are going to be coming forward and down, just down the road. And it's only three years away when they're talking about it, so, when we have to be in for it, so.
I agree with Clough. I think this is, I understand too about money, and that's worrying me. How are we going to get there? What's the plan? But I want to think big picture first of what our district needs. We had already talked about Stadium Support. It is in the middle of our city. And it's a 4, 5, 6, and you talk about transition and it's down the street within eyesight of our junior high school. It sits next to our stadium that we have right now, that is kind of lost in our city. It's just a, a place that sits in the middle of our city that we haven't paid enough attention to as a district, I believe. So that's where I, because I agree with you for this building too. I don't want to leave, I, I don't, I don't know if I could get behind building something for a district office and paying money for that. But if we're going to do something, let's try to do something great. And, and how are we going to get there? And that's probably a new building that we had said before we were going to do, except the difference was 5, 6, right? We already went through it. Now we're saying pre-K to 3, okay, different, you know, different wings. How, what is that going to look like? And it sits in the middle of our, our city with eye shot to our, our junior high. That just makes sense. One of the things that I know we've always talked about, or you hear people in the community talk about, is our, our high school is way, you know, out, the busing, that, you know. And so I think that that's something to really think about, is that site, that when you go by, it's just an open site right now.
I will, I will share my leaning towards. I am fully on board with PK 3, 4, 6. It's actually really exciting to me, probably somewhat coming from a little bit of my background of project management. Having project-based learning is so exciting. I love the thought of the orchestra, the band. I'd love to sneak some foreign language in there, maybe, who knows? But as far as kind of, so I am fully supportive of that configuration. Why I am leaning towards kind of the purchase of RCS is, I also see from a current issue to a longevity, in my mind, there's a world where like, we can put 6th grade there first, and we can alleviate some of the pressure. And then we can renovate and get 4, 5 in there. So that could be a total pipe dream of mine, but I feel like, given that it's a standing building with classroom space, there could be a phased renovation approach where we get some relief in our elementary buildings ahead of a full building rollout. And I love that. I think there's so much land there as well.
That's a good point.
Now, so the question is, Georgia, if we were to purchase RCS, as Cassie's talking about, like, start with 6th grade and then transition into 4th, 5th, how long will that take? Because I think we looked at that too in terms of the number of years. It doesn't matter where, whether we're adding on or acquire. It, I think, if I recall correctly in our capital improvement project, that it was going to take the same number of years.
It will. And I'll actually defer this a little bit to Nate, because he could probably tell you from a construction manager perspective, what that may change in terms of our timeline.
I think, so the process that you have to work through, I'll just go along. The process that you have to work through of buying the building is what's going to add the time, right? So you can't renovate or approve to renovate what you don't own. So you have to get voter approval to buy the building, then make the purchase, and then go to voter approval to make the renovations to the building. So there's definitely an extra step in there with purchasing the, the space, which is the added complexity.
I don't recall what the purchase price or the asking price is of the building, because that's also something that we need to look into. And then my second question is, because I'm not from Rome, you know, I, the only Stadium Support like I see is when I've dropped my kid off for batting lessons for softball. So I've only seen one small little area. Like, how big is it really? Can it really house all those people? Or is it a bigger renovation? Those are my two questions. And, oh, sorry, and the diocese, have we still been in contact with the diocese? And are they still willing to work with us?
So the diocese is still for sale. The property is still open at this point in time. If I recall, the cost was approximately 2 million. That was the asking price at that time. That's not to say that we can't potentially get it lower, since it has been on the market for a period of time. In terms of the size and the configuration, if we were to move 6th grade into there, we may be able to move a portion of them, if we can't move all of them at once. If I recall, there's move all of them at once. If I recall, there's six classrooms? I, I think there might be six or, or 10 classroom spaces that you'd be able to utilize in there. The question would be more about being able to make sure that they get the other pieces that they need, such as special ed and phys ed and some of those things that come along with those pieces as well. We might not be able to get all of those in there. So it may be you're, you're kind of dicing it up a little bit. But there is a potential that we could do some additions on one spot, one area of it and move one grade and then do the other additions while those students are in there. That would be part of the planning process once we got to that point. But again, that would really depend on how long it took us to get all of those pieces through SED.
I know that we had previously said, like for grade four, you needed roughly 12 to 14 classrooms right now.
Especially as you look at the enrollments, yes.
But is that around the same number that we would need for sixth grade if we were to piece that in?
Well, so it's going to be some time, but currently, to give you an idea, right now, we have about 16, just straight gen ed, sixth grade classrooms. So when you add the rest of those, you would need probably 21 classrooms to house that grade with all of the additional supports.
And then you guys just said there's roughly six to only six, 10 classrooms that would be available now then. So we would be less than half of what we would need to move the class over.
But from a timeline perspective, the voters have already authorized you to spend money to rent it, well, right, to do renovations, right, with the intention of it being cloth. So you, with direction, like if the board decides, hey, cloth is the building and we want to start to move in that direction, there's already a bucket of money there that could start to phase in those renovations. So from a timing perspective, cloth may be the fastest, right, but understand, we've made decisions based on the fastest before and you're trying to think long-term. So I'm not trying to talk you out of RCS. I just, we've already, we already have approval to sort of move in the direction of cloth. So it's just something to think about. The other thing I will say is, you really have that option with any of the buildings, right? With the exception of RCS, and you can't build additions. So the referendum language says improvements and renovations to all district-wide facilities. So you could theoretically start the process at any of the district-owned buildings as long as it's not additions with the 2024 capital improvement project. That's something to think about as well.
And then with the, I like the thought of possibly transitioning a few over at a time to alleviate some of the space. What would that look like for Clough if we were to put people in here? Like timeline, like obviously there's classrooms that are usable. And then same thing with stadium support, because again, stadium support, I only know of the gym.
Yeah, it's not a, it's not a school. It was knocked down. It's just a, it's a gym over there. So when we talk about stadium support, you have to build a new school.
Okay.
For reconfiguration purposes, because what we're really talking about with the PK three and four, six reconfiguration, it's probably best rather to do it piecemeal, to just move forward, renovate a building, build it like we want it for an intermediate school and peel the layers. Because it's going to take us two years. So once you make a decision and we start working with the construction team to build what you said you want, the reality is the rest of us, our team, we have to start talking with all of the players involved, transportation, you know, food service, instruction, to really reconfigure the district and also give parents options, right? And so that's a two-year process in, of itself while the building is being built. So I'd rather do all or nothing at the same time. At first, because the situation of the space issue was looking at us in the face, I thought that we could acquire RCS right away and use it as a school building. Once we found out that we couldn't and there's a lot of renovation and SED would not allow us to put students in there, I moved away from that. And I, I really feel like if we're going to do this, let's do it right and let's do it all at once and let's take the time to do it well.
So for me, I, I'll just say, currently, I agree with the PK through three, that whole configuration, but I also think that Clough is the best option right now in my personal opinion.
I just want to say, to your point, initially RCS seemed like, well, if there's an open school available in the area and we can get kids in there sooner than later, let's do that. But as it's come, you know, as Nate mentioned, it could take some time to purchase it and then come to find out we need renovations even to get any kids in there to start, that kind of deterred me. And I, I think logistically it makes sense just to build what we need and transition all at once. But yeah, I guess my next question is, so I'm kind of in between Clough and stadium support. As Kelly mentioned, stadium support's in eyesight of Stroud. Clough is pretty close to the high school right down the road and it's, and they're both very centrally located or as close as you could get with what, what options we have. But so how much space do the district offices need? And I don't know how much land we have here and probably not enough at stadium support, but would it be feasible to, if we're going to build this building, can we build an extra office spaces? I know it wouldn't be adable through the transportation, but is that even an option or not really?
Well, what I started looking at is really the, I don't know if you guys have ever been to the facilities office. It, it's fallen apart, right? So the reality is we need a space not only for district administration, but also for the operation center. So I figure since that space has fallen apart, we can really knock down some of the buildings that we, we have, we own buildings on these lands that, I mean, they told me right now they're being used as storage space. And honestly, I think they need to be knocked down. And, and for us to build a, a district administration slash operation center, because if you've ever walked in that space, it feels like it's about to fall apart. And, and so that's why it's like, let's do both of them together and let's have one building that can accommodate the operation folks and also all of the district folks in the next five years, within the next five years, because that's when our lease expires.
Does this building, would this house, would it house everything that you're?
No, I was hoping that we would build it around where the current facilities department is. I passed by those buildings several times, so I've posed a couple of questions and they told me that those buildings belong to us. They're just sitting there. And they, we don't need to have them sit in there when we can get rid of them and use the land to build whatever we want. And then once we build it, we can get rid of the facilities. Nate, you want to say something?
Just from a, without doing the Seeker analysis.
Yeah.
When you talk transportation center, that's, the ideal location for that is Dart Circle, where you have easy access, right, to build that infrastructure. If you go through Seeker and you say, we're going to run, how many of our buses through this neighborhood or the neighborhood at RCS, Seeker is, it's, I don't know that it won't move forward, but the environmental impact that's going to come out of that is not going to be favorable, would be my opinion, just sort of standing here today. And again, there, Lobella would do Seeker and Don Council will participate in Seeker, so they're the real experts. But standing here today, I think you're going to have real challenges with, with that for either of those, either this or RCS.
Yeah, yeah, I think that, that definitely makes sense. What's our current transportation location? Or is that what you're referring to as the facility op center?
The facility op center, that's where. It's not too far from the high school. You ever see where the buses are? It's right across from UCP.
Yeah.
You know, if you've ever been to UCP. So right there, you turn into Dart Circle, the facilities building is right there. Then there's another small building that we own. It's a brick building where the folks from facilities, they just store stuff in there. And then there's the bus in.
Okay. So we wouldn't, so from what you guys have collectively said, we, we could potentially build that in the future and use transportation dollars. It wouldn't just be out of pocket.
That's one potential path forward that other districts do as you, right, because it all, the, if you think back to the, earlier in the presentation with the building aid unit slides, right, and the, the cost, there's no teaching spaces with any of that.
That's right.
So you have to figure out another aid source to offset the cost. And what a lot of districts do is they combine transportation with operation and maintenance. If you want a great example of a potential facility, if you're ever like in the Baldensville area and you drive over, what is that, West Entry Road, there's a brand-new transportation operation center over there that is, it's like state-of-the-art, it's beautiful facility. And all of their district operations and transportation are housed in one location.
Okay, thanks.
I have one more question. It might be for like a different meeting, but do we know the number of vacant buildings we have and what it's costing us to have all these buildings and what it's costing our taxpayers? And that's a concern.
There are, there are other options that we're going to talk about, not for public consumption at this point, but, and stadium support is part of that as well.
Okay. And then is, are we done with RCS? Like, is that off the table for us? Or if it's not, because like if it's, if it's not, then I would want to know if that is an option of purchasing RCS, then are we going to have an additional vacant building sitting around? That's my other two cents.
So given time and I think conversation, is anyone sitting at this table not in support of PK three intermediate middle high school configuration? Can we knock that one off the list of having a decision?
I just wondered if there was some type of compromise, because it is so convenient with busing to have them all. If there's a way to separate the building into two halves or get another principal or somehow to keep everybody together with families. Logistically, I think it would be easier, but I can see what you're saying. I just wonder if there's a way to do it without building a separate building.
So you, yeah. So you like the concept of configuration?
I like the concept, but I think it would be much, the busing is the worst thing for kids to go through and the less net we have about earth.
Okay. Nadia?
PK three.
Jeff?
I don't either.
How about the wind blow? Two?
PK three.
PK, are you?
Yeah, I'm somewhat on the fence. Like Jeff, I, I can see the advantages both ways. I, from our conversations a couple of years ago, you know, like I mentioned earlier, I was, I was against the transitioning, but I, I also see the advantages of it. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily be against it, I guess is what I'm saying.
If you had to vote on it, what would your vote be?
You didn't have to vote today.
Just a pair of resolution.
You're leaning toward PK three, four, six configuration. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, what if, you know, just for conversation, because we've already gone through this, if you built another school and it was five, six, could you fit PK, could you fit pre-K into those buildings? And I only say that, but because we've already done this and we already, everyone had said, okay, five, I mean, let's go back. We all had said and agreed on five, six at stadium support. That is where we ended. If you look back where we ended the last time where we said, if we had the money now, we've already done this study. We've talked to the teachers. We've done five, six at stadium support. So I'm not in.
The goal is to reduce transition, because here's, here's what you're looking at. If you want to do a PK four, you're talking about five years in a building and now students are transitioning for two years and then two years later, they transition again to seven, eight. And then two years, again, they transition to nine, 12. It's too many transition.
Is there a number of transitions?
Less years.
She's saying it will be quicker transition.
It would be, what you want is a PK three with four years, right? PK, I mean, some PKs, three. I, I started looking at four-years-old up, but you were talking about kids who are three-years-old who can stay in that building until they reach third grade. And then when they transition, they spend a good solid three years at the intermediate level, then they go to middle school, spend two years, and then move up to nine, 12. When you start thinking about a five, six intermediate and so on, it, there's too many choppy transition, at least in my mind.
And I think like the important piece of like the entire next-gen curriculum, you're going to leave the first year of essentially the second cohort in a building where the, the style of learning is going to be completely different.
Yeah. I like a good three-years, four-years set.
Oh, I'm for that, you know, the PK through three. And I will use my daughter as an example. My youngest is in fifth grade. And the difference between honestly, third grade to fourth grade is very different. And like the, her maturity level was very different last year and it's even more different this year. And she's maturing even more. So I personally think from a mother's perspective and watching my daughter go through it now, I think it makes sense to me. And she also started, they also started switching teachers a little bit last year in her own school to get that feeling. They're doing it, you know, this year as well. And again, it's a maturity thing, I think. And, you know, she loves to go visit the little kids and they use her to go visit the little kids and set the example and read books and stuff like that. But again, it's a maturity and growth thing for me. I, I am for it.
The only, the only thing that I, seeing how in the last few years, is the, the leadership piece, that it's one for all. I think that's important. It's so different everywhere. Even you talking about, okay, at my school, we're switching and, well, at my school, we don't switch or, you know. So that piece is, is now, I, I think that's important. That, but I am 100% pre-K in schools. That, that is what I know. But I can get behind, like John said, I'm not, but I can, I can get behind that because I think the pre-K piece is imperative before anything else. So.
Okay. So next meeting, you are, it sounds like we have a pretty majority that we are good on configuration. So the two things you need for us next week are which building we're going to prioritize for a renovation. Yikes. Okay.
Yep.
Does anyone need any additional information going into next week?
I think it would be good to have, if it's the three choices, the three choices, the costs, the, right, side by side by side.
Yep.
Because I think that's.
One slide.
Yep.
Boom, done.
Please.
You got it.
Yeah, I think that, and specifically, I think we had about the same dollar amount between Clough and stadium support, but there is 13 million already set aside for this capital. So I can't, so if you could just, maybe you could even talk about it now or bring it to the next meeting, just how the difference would be between those two properties, even though there's the same dollar amount because of that existing approved 13 million dollar.
Correct. So when you're looking at it from a cost perspective, Clough will cost almost the same amount, but you're going to split it into two buckets. You're going to have a bucket of 2024 that Clough money is already dedicated towards, that the board and the voters have already approved. And then you're going to have a separate bucket that will have to be approved at some point at a later date for the remaining, the remainder amount. Whereas if we were to do stadium support, that will be one bucket of 74 million that would have to be approved all at one time.
But you can still move the 13 million that you had approved for this already over, can't you?
To a different building?
Yeah.
You can, yes.
Right. So cost-wise, it's the same thing.
We, we would just write that into the resolution so that it was known that that was already approved. So that way you would be transparent with the, the taxpayers.
How much land does Clough have?
I would have to pull up the map. I'm not sure off the top of my head. I apologize.
Oh, we, yeah. And there's, there's land back there that still belongs to us. There's a playground that we have. Because remember, UPK is on that other side. All you see is this part here for the district administration. But there's, we, we went through every building and we did an assessment. So yeah, there's room for expansion at Clough. And that's why it came on the table as an option.
Are there any other questions or is there any data that I can provide to you besides the one pager?
Not that I know of in this moment, but I'll let you know if I do, Nerlan.
Nate, is there anything else that we're leaving out that you think you need to clarify? Maybe we've made a mistake on or, you know, you know this district better than we do too. So from a construction perspective.
No, I would just, the more that you can sort of refine the options, the tighter and the better that information will be, right? Fiscal numbers are very conservative at this point. So I think. at this point. So I think, unless currency's on the right point, make the decision that's best sort of long-term, big picture. And then say, this is the option that we want to go with, and then give us that direction, and then let us go dive deeper into the numbers and really refine things. Because there's probably going to be more conversations about different options. Even with the option that you picked, there's going to be, have to be additional discussions.
Yep.
Can I ask one, one further question though? Because stately, according to the state, was still a seven, nine building. Does that have any ramifications going forward? I mean, is that something that's going to take a while for them to?
So once we have a decision, we will go to the state and we'll have conversations with them about the BAUs and what the displacement is of those students. We don't want to go to the state until we have a really refined idea of what we want to do. So that way we can propose that to them and give them all of the data at one time. And then they'll be able to provide us with an answer back. Time-wise, it could take two or three months for them to make that decision. But in the meantime, we could still start that design process and start the voter authorizations and so forth.
Because my only confusion is, we had a building project for that when it was turned into a five, six building. So how could they not then have done something then? I mean, that's my confusion. It doesn't make any logical sense.
So, so I can't speak for the state or what happens at that level, and I was not here during that time. But sometimes because you already have the BAUs in place, rather than going back through the evaluation and the analysis of that, you would leave that in order to be able to receive the aid on it. So there's reasons that it probably was done. But at this time, if we're going to go to the state and ask them to move those BAUs, we're going to have to be transparent with them, provide them with all the data, and make sure that we have a really good plan in place. So that way, when they're telling us yes or no or what we can do, we have that with fidelity.
And that's going back almost 20 years, I think, for that seven, nine, five, six conversion. Yeah, I thought so.
Fiscal mitigated that risk, right? Because if you, earlier in the presentation, Ms. Gonzalez said that they did not reallocate those 1,100 BAUs, right? So they, they've presented sort of the absolute worst-case scenario, zero tax impact, and they didn't reallocate BAUs. That's how they protected you.
So, so once we have a decision and we're able to move forward with those things, then we'll refine that. We'll start having those conversations with the state. We'll start having conversations about if we don't want to come up with the 29 million or whatever the number is in a reserve, what would that look like? And maybe what do we have to have in a reserve instead? What could us as a school district and Board of Education be okay with? So that's the piece that, once we have an answer of the building and what we think is the beginning cost, then we can kind of refine that and keep working with you to get to a better number.
Okay. I just thought of one more question that was a concern when we originally approved the five, six at stadium support. It was how much space is, the limiting space, and how much parking would be available and how that would affect the stadium. So you don't, I don't know if you can answer the question now, but the difference between, I know there's a lot of land here, Clough, behind this building, and stadium support, you're kind of locked in between a few streets. So is there a significant difference as far as parking, getting buses in and out, even here in the mornings, when you, when there's 150 kids getting dropped off for pre-K? It's a manhouse down here on Bell Road, getting in and out for pickup. So is there one that, is there a difference or one that would, you would suggest being possibly potentially better situation for the traffic flow and the parking and everything else that goes on with? Because that, because, I mean, we were very concerned with five, six, and now, now we're talking about four, five, six. So, and how would the building even fit in that space?
So I'm not going to suggest, but I think the, again, you're going to have to work through, if you decide stadium support, you're going to have to work through Seeker. I think the intersection of Turn Road and it comes in on an angle heads down.
Crowton.
Crowton, thank you. I think that intersection could be a challenge, right? So when there was a high school there, that front loop was there. But the transportation standards are much different now than when, right, there was a high school there. So I think you're going to have to work through that intersection. And I also think those one-way streets coming into and out of stadium support could potentially pose a challenge that you're going to have to work through. Conceptually, in my mind, if you choose stadium support, it's likely that the area where the shot put is, the outfield to the baseball field, that would make the most sense to expand parking. And so you're probably losing that area, would be my guess. Just very conceptually, standing here today, answering that question. There are probably other options where you could, where you could, right, you could build the addition in that direction and then park along Turn Road. But again, you've still got to think about the buses and how you're going to get the buses in and out of there, which is probably the most significant challenge.
And so we'll put all of the three comparisons on one pager for you, and then you'll be all right.
All right. Well, with that monumental decision that we will make in a week.
Next week, yes.
Thank you all for your attendance today. And I am going to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss matters regarding collective negotiations and other matters made confidential by state or federal law. Move by Sue, second by John, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We will not be returning to public session. Thank you all.